Call the public hearing for the Bryn Mawr development, October 3, 2024. This is a public hearing for the consideration of an annexation agreement between agreement concerning the property to be known as the Foster Avenue addition to Wooddale, which is approximately 4.53 acres. C1 Chicago 2 LLC, the property owner petitioned the city to annex the property. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sismarski.
Here.
Alderman Hartwoods.
Here.
Alderman Hardy Woods.
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here. Okay, I declare a quorum present. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Daily Herald newspaper. A copy of the published legal notice will be Exhibit A. Notice of this annexation was also served on the supervisor and trustees of Addison Township and the Addison Township Road District Commissioner. The property is legally described in the legal notice. The property bears the current common addresses. Seventeen West 080 Washington Street, seventeen West 040 Washington Street, seventeen West 049 Washington Street, seventeen West 061 Washington Street, seventeen West 075 Washington Street, seventeen West 036 Hawthorne Avenue, seventeen West 022 Hawthorne Avenue. These parcels and certain rights of way which are also to be annexed are all currently located in unincorporated DuPage County. Any individual present tonight who wishes to speak to the proposed annexation agreement and annexation will be provided the opportunity to do so. I will now open the public hearing. Ms. Springer, can you please present background information on the annexation of this property to the city and provide informative relative to the annexation agreement before us this evening?
Do you sound like a smart or firm that the testimony about to give in this case will be the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth? I do. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Police. So this public hearing is for the annexation agreement. It's actually a First Amendment to the annexation agreement for Phase Three of the Bryn Mawr development. This is really just for context, we are looking at all three phases of the Bryn Mawr development. Nippon was the first phase. Phase Two was approved last year and Phase Three, almost all of this area was approved back earlier in spring of this year. This is what was annexed to the city back in March of 2024. Basically sixty-three properties in Phase Three. We did not include seven properties that Cyrus did not Cyrus One did not own at the time. So these seven properties are the subject of the public hearing this evening. Cyrus One has since purchased all the properties and have them under common ownership control. Back in March of this year, we did approve an annexation agreement for Phase Three for the sixty-three properties that were previously annexed. This is the site plan on the left side of the screen that shows what the layout of the buildings was at that time, given that these seven parcels, these five and these two, were not part of the development. So basically, the site plan was working around those parcels. The proposed square footage for this phase at that time was six hundred and eighty-five thousand square feet. That meant, including Phase Two with the two buildings that were previously approved, the entire campus would be just shy of a million square feet. With the addition of the seven parcels, the developer was able to reconfigure Phase Three to include a lot more square footage and reorient the buildings. So instead of having six hundred and eighty-five thousand square feet, they're now proposing nine hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred square feet of proposed building. Now, that's an increase of over three hundred thousand square feet. That's more than the average building that is being constructed here. The average building sizes are about a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, all the way up to two hundred and ninety thousand square feet. So the addition of over three hundred thousand square feet is larger than their largest building that's being proposed. So the subject of the public hearing is the annexation agreement amendment. It's the First Amendment to the annexation agreement for Bryn Mawr Phase Three. Here are some of the main provisions. The term of the annexation agreement remains at fifteen years. It has all of the standard provisions regarding connection of the development to utilities, applicability to all city codes and ordinances and permits. With the additional seven parcels, as I mentioned, they're able to add over three hundred thousand square feet, which does extend the build-out time by a couple of years. This is subject to final attorney review. I would note that it makes sense for this extension because they have lost quite a bit of time due to the seven properties that kind of were holdouts earlier in the process. So they lost kind of a development season or a construction season. And secondly, the addition of the equivalent of an entire new building does demand a little bit more time. So this will be the ultimate layout of all what we're calling one, two, three, four, five buildings, but actually, this large building, the southwest corner, is considered two buildings. They're completely separate of one another, they just have a common wall, they'll be butted up against each other. And that concludes my comments for the public hearing.
Okay, are there any questions? Alderman Woods.
Thank you, Mayor.
And real quick, please raise your microphones, turn them on because we're getting complaints that people cannot hear us. So just wanted to say.
And then there's some that say they don't want to hear. Anyway, here we are. So again, this is, I don't understand, so we're approving buildings or just the annexation agreement? I don't know how the two are meshed, being meshed together, it seems.
The annexation agreement.
Absent of any of the, all the building stuff that we just.
Mr. Bond.
No, you got it.
Ms. Springer?
Sure. So the public hearing is for the annexation agreement. At the conclusion of the public hearing, there are action items on the agenda. Those action items relate to approval of the annexation agreement amendment, the annexation of those seven parcels, the rezoning of those seven parcels from what they come in as, which is residential, to industrial, and a subdivision plat, which basically vacates the rest of that Washington Avenue cul-de-sac that we had allowed to remain because of those properties that were, we thought weren't going to be part of this development. So they, it's vacating those rights of way and creating a single lot for the entire, what is now sixty-three plus seven, so seventy lots.
Go ahead, follow up.
But that's down the road. This piece today is, right now, in front of us is just annexation of the extra seven pieces into the original, whatever we're calling it, Phase Three.
Ms. Springer?
Correct. So that's all we're doing this evening. They still do need to come before our council again, and they have to go to a public hearing before the CDC for the final zoning entitlements for Phase Three. So that will include the planned unit development, and that is targeted for December of this year, so it would be in front of the PZB committee and city council probably in January of next year.
Alderman Messina.
So just something clear, today, it's the annexation agreement. Later, they will come back and we will determine zoning.
Ms. Springer?
So we're approving the actual zoning classification this evening, which is the I-1, but the planned unit development, which sets out kind of exactly where the buildings will be, which I've shown you some of their plans already, it'll identify where easements need to be dedicated, where all the roads will go, it'll have all the engineering plans, all the stormwater, lighting, landscaping, and the like.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment concerning the proposed annexation agreement and annexation of the property? Okay, I don't see any. There being no further public comment, I will now entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. It was Alderwoman Ames was the second, Alderman Sismarski was first. There being a motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman, excuse me. Alderman Hardy Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And that passes. Okay, the motion is carried, the public hearing is closed, the council will commence deliberations on the ordinance authorizing the entry into the annexation agreement and to annex this property later in the evening, or in the meeting, I should say. Next, second public hearing. This is the public hearing to consider the approval of a redevelopment plan and project for the designation of a redevelopment project area to be known as the Foster Bussy Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Area and the adoption of tax increment allocation financing, therefore, roll call, please.
Alderman Hardy Woods.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderwoman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Sismarski.
Here.
Alderman Hartwoods.
Here.
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Okay, we begin tonight with a public hearing for the city's redevelopment plan for the Foster Bussy TIF. Mr. Wilson, would you please provide a summary of the Foster Bussy TIF?
Do you sound like a smart or firm that the testimony about to give in this case will be the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I also do.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a little background on this, and then if it's okay, I will turn it over to Mr. Dickinson at the end for his presentation.
Okay.
Sure. So on February 2, 2023, the city by resolution authorized a feasibility study with SB Friedman for the potential establishment of a new TIF district. The general area as described, forty-four acres plus or minus. The land generally bounded on the north by the northern property line of the parcels north of Washington Street, Route 83 on the east. The eastern property lines of the properties east of Edgewood is the western property line of the proposed TIF. Foster Avenue to the south, less the properties incorporated in Bensonville directly on the corner of Foster and 83. All unincorporated territory eligible to be annexed into the city is to have been annexed before the TIF can be established. As you all will aware, the remaining seven parcels was just presented to you this evening about ten minutes ago. On July 26, 2024, a redevelopment plan prepared by SB Friedman was placed on file with the city clerk, and required notices were distributed per statute to all the affecting taxing bodies. Those were in this case, the DuPage County, DuPage County Forest Preserve, DuPage County Airport Authority, Addison Township, Addison Township Road District, the City of Wooddale, the Wooddale, the city public member, Wooddale Park District, Wooddale Fire District, Wooddale Library District, Wooddale School District Seven, Fenton Community High School District 100, COD District 502, and Illinois Deco. On July 18, which is when that result, the ordinance placing that report on file was approved by ordinance 024-024 titled proposing a redevelopment plan and project designated legally described project area and adopting the tax increment financing for the designated project area being generally described as I've just described. An interested parties registry and rules were also approved by ordinance at that same meeting. Also in that ordinance, it called for a joint review board meeting to be convened on August 8 of 2024 and set the public hearing date for this evening, which is why we're here. Notices of the public hearing have been provided for to the property owners and the affected taxing bodies in accordance with state statute and have been published in the newspaper, the Daily Herald, again according to that statute. On August 8, the joint review board was convened, and Mr. Jay Babowitz was introduced as the public member, and I was designated the chairperson of the JRB once again. Representatives from SB Friedman were there to discuss the redevelopment plan and project, their presentation, and reported their findings. After some conferring back and forth, the JRB voted to continue that meeting until August 29 of 2024. At that meeting on August 29, when the JRV reconvened, there was a recommendation to approve the plan as presented by SB Friedman by a seven-two vote. One quick note, there was one abstention, and per rubber tools of orders, abstentions go to the prevailing side, so there were three positive votes, two no's, one abstention, but again, that goes through the prevailing side, leading to a seven-two vote. So at this point, if it's okay with the mayor, I'll turn it over to Jeff Dickinson from SB Friedman to provide their summary and report on the proposed TIF. I'd also like to acknowledge that Lily Van der Zanden is in attendance, she worked on this report with Mr. Dickinson, and we also have Mike Roth from Ice Miller as TIF council here this evening if there's any questions that either of us cannot answer. So if it's okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dickinson.
Go ahead, Mr. Dickinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Wilson. Good evening, all. My name is Jeff Dickinson, I'm with SB Friedman Development Advisors. We've been your TIF consultant for some years, and we appreciate that. As Mr. Wilson mentioned, Lily's here with me, my colleague, we did this work together. This is a summary of the report that has been on file and is in your packet. I think a lot of these facts are, you're pretty well aware of, the seventy parcels, approximately forty-four acres. As Brad mentioned, the parcels have to be annexed, that's the subject we were discussing earlier. There was also an inducement resolution that was passed by the council in October of 2023 that allowed some investment to take place prior to the adoption of the TIF. I think that's a question that some folks have had about timing, and so I think that's an important aspect of it. There was an inducement resolution that allowed some of the demolition activity to occur prior to designation, but that was there for that reason, to allow that, allow the TIF to still go forward. So this is the statute around TIF for eligible factors under the improved parcels. This is a list of the work that we did, Lily and I, we gathered data from a variety of sources, including fieldwork. Ultimately, we found the area is eligible as a conservation area. We have buildings that are more than thirty-five years old, seventy, ninety-four percent, I'm sorry, over thirty-five years old, and five factors are meaningfully present and reasonably distributed. The minimum standard here would be the age test and three factors, so it's age plus five, so it's a strong conservation area finding, I would say. Again, most of, there was deterioration throughout the district, mostly on the rights of way, but we observed it on ninety-seven percent of the parcels were served by deteriorated infrastructure. Utility conditions, these are, they're not on city systems, they're not up to city code, and so now that the property's in the city, they're inadequate, I would say. Similarly, they're not up to city detention code or anything like that, these houses have been here a long time, and they were built just as they were allowed at the time by the county, but they're not up to those codes either. The parcels we found were the subject of deleterious land use. You all know where these are, they're surrounded about three sides by warehouses and industrial, it's not a proper location really for houses to be surrounded, so the change that is anticipated to come to the land will make a lot of sense, I think, from a land planning perspective. Similarly, the area was developed without benefit of a plan, and again, even the county's plans have indicated their expectation that this would eventually become an industrial area, so it's really this transformation that would be supported through TIF is consistent with county land use planning, I think consistent with the city's plans as well. There are other required findings and tests under the law, we believe that the study area meets all of those and therefore is eligible for adoption or designation as a TIF. We did draft a redevelopment plan as required by statute. It lays out goals and objectives, these are usually quite, not very specific, I guess, I'll say that, because the TIF district lasts twenty-three years, so support new construction, support replacement of infrastructure, support property assembly as needed, and otherwise basically use this TIF tool to support the land use goals of this council, and future councils, I suppose. There's a budget in the TIF plan as required by law, that's not an obligation to spend, that's a ceiling on spending, and there are line items, money can move around amongst line items, but the budget is weighted where we expect most costs to be, property assemblies, site preparation, and public works and other infrastructure improvements is where we expect the bulk of the TIF dollars to go. Property, yep. The future land use plan is, allows for office industrial, retail, parks, you're going to make other decisions as a body about future land use here, so the TIF plan is just flexible. Basically, that's the goal, don't be particularly limiting, and let that decision be made elsewhere, which we know is up part of the PUD discussion and the things, I guess the I-1 zoning perhaps, but it's not really my area, so I should keep my mouth shut. And this is just the calendar, sort of updating the things that Mr. Wilson was talking about. So happy to field any questions.
Thank you. Anyone interested in addressing the city council regarding the proposed TIF may do so at this time? Okay, is there anyone else interested in addressing the city council that's in the Okay, there being no further public comment, the city council is scheduled to vote on a proposed TIF on October 17. I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now adjourned. I'll just give you everything. Next, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Hardy Woods.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman, Alderwoman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Sismarski.
Here.
Alderman Hartwoods.
Here.
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
I declare a quorum, please stand and join in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, first item, approval of minutes, September 5, 2024, regular city council meeting minutes, there was a correction, I don't know if everybody noticed that.
You did.
Oh, you did already, okay. So we need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, with the correction. Second, okay. Any comments, corrections, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda this evening? I have no written communique. Under mayor's report, we do have one, the food pantry donation request. I don't know if everybody read it, but I'll read it real quick. Bensonville and Wooddale Food Pantry, Dear Mayor Police and Alderman, Hunger Action Month is a nationwide campaign that takes place every September to raise awareness of hunger in the United States and to encourage people to take action. The campaign is led by Feeding America and its network of food banks. The goal is to promote ways for people to get involved in the fight against hunger, such as volunteering, donating, or advocating. Food shouldn't be an impossible choice yet for many families in our service area. A daily meal isn't a choice between different dishes, it's a choice between food and other crucial needs like medicine, electricity, or childcare. In honor of Hunger Action Month, we are seeking a monetary duination from the City of Wooddale to support the Bensonville-Wooddale Food Pantry's ongoing mission of delivering nutritious food and timely assistance to our community members. Alderman Woods.
Is this just the Wooddale-Bensonville Food Pantry?
Yes.
I remember last year we.
We also had.
Donated money to them and the Wooddale.
And the Wooddale, correct.
Do we remember what we gave last year? Was it twenty-five hundred apiece here?
I think it was.
Alderman Catalano, you remember?
I made a motion, I think it was twenty-five hundred, if I'm not mistaken.
Is that your motion today?
Yes, my motion.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? So wait, the motion is for Bensonville-Wooddale Food Pantry, or are we doing both?
Both, adding.
Adding the Wooddale. Okay, just wanted to, that's what I figured, I just wanted to make sure it's, the record is right. Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Hardy Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, city manager's report, Mr. Murmice.
Just one item this evening, the city is once again going to host its very popular trunk-or-treat event that will take place this year on Sunday, October 27, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, located at Wooddale Road and Commercial Street. Any businesses or residents that are interested and want to register a vehicle, decorate their vehicle, and hand out candy, please go to our website at wooddale.com to get more information. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Next, consent agenda. If no objections, we have ten items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Alderman Hardy Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Next, need a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, a resolution authorizing the execution of an amendment to the annexation agreement for the property, property commonly known as the Foster Avenue addition to Wooddale to the City of Wooddale, Illinois 60191, Bryn Mawr Phase Three. Item number two, an ordinance annexing seven additional properties to those commonly known as the Foster Avenue addition to Wooddale to the City of Wooddale, Illinois 60191, Bryn Mawr Phase Three. Item number three, an ordinance vacating a portion of Washington Street in the City of Wooddale, Illinois 60191, Bryn Mawr Phase Three. Item number four, an ordinance rezoning land from R1, R1 Estate Residential District to I-1 Industrial Business Park in an area generally located along Route 83, Bussy Road between Washington Street to the north and Foster Avenue to the south, Bryn Mawr Phase Three. Item number five, a resolution approving a revised preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate lots for property, commonly known as Foster Avenue addition to Wooddale, Illinois 60191, Bryn Mawr Phase Three. Item number six, an ordinance approving amendments to the city's unified development ordinance, UDO, and sign code providing for clarified and updated zone and sign regulations. Item number seven, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Canadian Pacific Kansas City Limited CPKC for installation and funding of predictive mobility system and ITS interconnect for advanced warning signs. Item number eight, a resolution approving professional services agreement with the City of Wooddale and HR Green for Phase Two engineering services for the Elizabeth Drive Bridge replacement project in amount not to exceed four hundred thousand. Item number nine, a resolution approving amendment number three to the professional services agreement between the City of Wooddale and Thomas Engineering Group LLC for professional engineering services for fiscal year 2023 through 2025, road projects in amount not to exceed sixty-six thousand five hundred and ten dollars and eighty-five cents. Item number ten, a resolution authorizing a change order to the agreement with Pacific Construction Services LLC for the Police Department City Hall Interior renovation project in amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
A motion and a second. Roll call.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning, Alderman Catalano?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Currielli?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public works, Alderman Hardy Woods?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and administration, Alderman Ames?
I have one report, Mayor.
Go ahead.
An ordinance proposing the establishment of special service area number seventeen, Bryn Mawr Phase Three, in the city of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois, and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith. That is my motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Who's that, Randy? Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Sorry, out of order here. Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Nothing under other business this evening? Approval of list of bills for September 19th, 2024, Alderman Ames?
I have two reports for the list of bills. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for September 19th, 2024 in the amount of seven-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and seventy-two cents.
Do I have a second? Second. Questions on any of these? Alderman Catalano?
Yes, on page two fifty-three, the tree survey, seventeen thousand. What does that entail, that survey?
Who's going to take that?
So this was a grant that we received through the Morton Arboretum to conduct a tree survey. They've gone around, they've inspected every tree in town, they've taken the diameter, the height, the species, any maintenance report for it, and they're going to provide that data to us and help us develop a preventative maintenance program for our tree network. This was going to be a reimbursement from the Morton Arboretum for these expenses.
Okay. You have a follow-up?
No.
Thanks. Alderman Hartwoods?
Yeah, just, what page? Packet page two forty-six. One, two, third item, one sixty-five Commercial Street survey. Do we own a piece of property there?
Mr. Wilson? Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
The map?
The field back here? The new field back here.
Oh, is that, okay.
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, that was the parcel that we had to have surveyed that was the Park District parcel.
That's its actual address?
Yeah, it doesn't have an address. We have to get a new plat because it's in the middle of an existing address, so that's why I was thrown off.
Gotcha.
I wasn't sure if Mr.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, let's take a roll call on these.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes.
My second item is I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for October 3rd, 2024 in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents.
And that was your motion you sent? Second.